Roll call, Joan.
Charles Long.
Here.
Chris Mortensen. Michael Schaaf.
Here.
Priscilla Manolito. Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Thank you. Joan, we do have a quorum. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. And let's do the pledge of allegiance. All those in the audience, please join us.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag, saving New Mexico, the essence of a perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you, board members, those in the audience. Let's go down to item two, approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we table item six A until our next board meeting so we can give it a little further consideration before we have an opportunity to talk about it.
Okay, so your motion is to approve the agenda but move six A to the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion's been made. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. Let's go to the election of office officers. Per Board Policy 11-5/B0900. Board members?
Mr. President, I would like to make the nomination for the Office of President, Charles Long.
Okay. Any other motions?
I'd like to motion that we select Priscilla Manolito as president of our board. Reason being that this president position for the Gallup McKinley County School Board is not just something, not just a title. This position actually takes time and effort. And it's something that you have to be dedicated to. And this is one of the main reasons I myself have not been president. Is because I know I don't have that time to put into this. It takes time and effort. And Ms. Manolito makes herself visible out in the district, the whole district, whether it's her school or not. She represents the board, which our board president needs to do. They need to be visible, they need to be out there at all the schools to represent the board. And that's their position. Not only that, we need to ensure that our agendas are properly done. And I really feel that, you know, this position is very important. And we need to take this into consideration when we do our vote. Thank you.
Any other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we retain Mr. Michael Schaaf as the board secretary.
Let's do the president.
Just for the president, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, just need someone to close the nomination.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Chris Mortensen for president.
Any other nominations?
I would like to make a motion that we close nominations.
Okay, motion's been made to close nomination. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay. We have three nominees. You want to be neutral and count the... Yeah, do a roll call. I guess... Yeah. Okay. First vote would be for myself. All those in favor?
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Manolito?
No.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay. And we go to Priscilla Manolito. Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
No.
Mr. Mortensen?
No.
Mr. Long?
No.
Okay, next one. Chris Mortensen?
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
No.
Mr. Mortensen?
No as well.
Mr. Long?
No.
Okay, we've taken care of the president's position. Thank you, board members. Nominations are open for the vice president.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion, nomination for vice president, Chris Mortensen.
Okay.
I'd like to close.
Okay. Nominations has been closed. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
So, Chris Mortensen. By, yeah. We only have one nominee for vice president. And Mr. Mortensen will be vice president by acclamation. Yeah, roll call. We go to secretary.
Mr. President, I'll repeat my motion to nominate Michael Schaaf as secretary.
Okay. Nomination. Any other nominations?
Close.
Okay. Roll call, nomination.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, nominations are closed. And we have a secretary by acclamation. Michael Schaaf, thank you very much. Okay, we go down to B. Recognition of students.
I would first like to say thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for the nomination. I think we'll continue to have this kind of vote again this year. But it doesn't deviate from what I do within my community and within the district. I love being a voice for our children, no matter if there's a title behind my name. I enjoy what I do, and I'll keep doing it. And I'm just thankful for your nomination, Mr. Mitchell, but it's okay. I think we have...
I think nominations and votings are over.
I'm just saying my thank you, sir. But I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. One of the things that I do on the board is I'm the Region One president for seven districts within our school. They include Bloomfield, Kirtland, Aztec, CCSD, Gallup McKinley County, Zuni school districts. And this past year, when we met, one of the meetings, we decided to increase our scholarship recipients from one scholarship to three. So we're very honored to have three recipients in our Region One. And I presented the other two already. And one is actually from our school district. Ms. Amber Billy. Are you here? Thank you. If you could please stand while I read this for you. Says, Dear Mrs. Billy, congratulations. You have been selected as the Region One 2018 New Mexico School Board Association Scholarship recipient. We receive many outstanding scholarship nominations from school board throughout New Mexico, which were reviewed and recommended by the New Mexico School Board Association Regional Officers and approved by our Board of Directors. Enclosed, you will find your scholarship award in an amount of $1,000, which could be utilized to pay for your tuition, fees, books, or any costs necessary to pursue your degree at the institution of higher learning. We offer our most sincere congratulations and wish you luck in your future educational endeavors. So if you could join me up here and the board members, we would like to present you with your award and your scholarship. Could the, could your parents also be recognized with you? Could the parents please stand? Thank you for all you guys do. We really appreciate it. Thank you. That concludes my recognition.
Okay, thank you. Let's go down to item three. The meeting minutes of June 18th. Board members?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we...
Okay, motion's been made by Michael Schaaf to approve the meeting minutes of June 18th, 2018. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. We go down to item four. Approval of consent agenda items.
I would like to make a motion to approve, please.
Okay, motion's been made by Priscilla Manolito to approve the consent agenda items. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, board members. We go down to item five. Study circle. Andrea Thomas.
Okay, good evening, school board members. Superintendent Mr. Hyatt and audience. I would like to talk, I guess, on two things I seen on the agenda here. And one of them being six A, in which the motion to move the meeting. There was a motion to move this item to the next meeting. And just a few words about it. As far as lobbyists, I am not sure why this is on the agenda. I thought Gallup McKinley County Schools had their lobbyists already. I've never heard or seen in the papers as far as our lobbyists, any complaints or anything. So I was surprised to see that on there. And it seems like there's a lot of, I guess, issues. We're into a new school year. And I hope that all of you school board members learn how to work together a little bit more and respect each other. Already seen disrespectful as far as cutting into somebody talking. And that's not nice. And you electees, I wasn't surprised of who the president was going to be, vice president and secretary, you know. It's a shame how we let the state government, city government get into our Gallup McKinley County School. You are the board members. You should be running Gallup McKinley County Schools. Not anybody outside. This is our schools, this is our children. Let the state and the city take care of their own issues. Going on to, I guess, the other thing was the middle school college that was talked about. That's another thing that would be best for Gallup McKinley County Schools. Somewhere in here, I'm not sure why this comes up, but there's trust problems, you know. And once one person does something, it takes a lot to get the trust back. So hopefully Gallup, the middle school college and Gallup McKinley County Schools can, would be able to work together this year. And the last thing is, I want to thank Mrs. Manolito for being out there like you are for our people, our children especially. I know being on the school board takes a lot and commitment. And it's commitment to us parents. And we really appreciate, and there was a lot of parents I know at Tohatchee Schools that were very surprised at the school supplies they received this year. And I want to thank you, Mr. Hyatt, and your administration for that. But Priscilla, keep, continue what you're doing. You're doing a great job, you know. I mean, being president, and I hope Mr. Long to see you out there a little bit more, visible. I know it takes money, but you know what? That's what you're in that position for, to be out there for our communities, for our rural school area. To be out there for our children and their activities, you're supposed to be there to support. And that's what I see with Ms. Manolito. So I hope that happens. You want this position, then show it, do it. Thank you.
Let's go down to reports. Superintendent Hyatt?
President Long, members of the board. Given the amount of work we have to do tonight on executive session and outside of executive session, I'm going to forego my superintendent's report till next board meeting and so that we can get into the information at hand.
Okay. Board reports?
Mr. President, I will follow Mr. Hyatt's lead with foregoing that in lieu of the busy agenda that we have this evening.
Okay.
Mr. President, I just want to say that I will be starting my chapter house visit. We do have the first one coming up Wednesday, I believe, with administration. We will be in Tohatchee for our chapter meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes. I have a whole list, but I'm going to continue on with what Mr. Hyatt said. But I would like to say a couple of things. Thank you to the Gallup McKinley County School for being in the parade. I saw a lot of, are there in the ceremonial parade? I saw Dr. White and Sandra Freeland, Vern Baya, some other dancers out there. And those are great role models you guys were for our children. And it really touched my heart seeing you guys out there. Thank you for that. And then our Tohatchee students were out there in their military uniforms. That was also wonderful for them to be out there. And of course, our own Miss Ceremonial 2017-18 gave her crown away. She's a product of Gallup, I mean Gallup McKinley County, but the Tohatchee Cougars, Zonah Bob Martin. So I think that was wonderful accomplishment of our students. And we did see more in there of our princesses and our braves that walked that walk and also danced in some of the performances, the gore dance, the powwows and those things. So thank you, and thank you to Gallup for always continuing to help us revitalize our language with the ceremonial. The other thing I wanted to say was, thank you, administration, Mr. Hyatt, and ourselves as board members for continuing to help our children with the school supplies. I think that made a huge impact on our community. I think out of the, I don't know, 50, 60 phone calls and text messages I received for thank yous, there was only one that I received that said, "We shouldn't have done it." But I think that that one needed me to talk with them and say why. But that's what I wanted to report, and thank you very much for that. I think, my last thing is, I would like to have a report on our counseling and from Mrs. Lindenmeyer next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I guess, the notices and communication, you can read that for yourself. We have the next Board of Education meeting on September 4th. And following that, the 24th. And also, those in the audience, if you have kids going to school within Gallup McKinley County Schools, this year, we have a parent teacher conference September 17th at each respective schools. And we go down to item seven. Item six has been deferred to the next meeting. Number seven is executive session. Need a motion?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we...
Okay. And in the executive session, roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. President, Mr. Schaaf, can you please read it for the record while we're going into executive session, sir? Or your motion?
For limited personal matters, we receive personal report with the superintendent as permitted under Section 10, 15, 1, H2 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act and communications with legal counsel regarding pending or threatened litigation regarding threat of a lawsuit made by a charter school, settlement of ending revocation action with charter school and a threatened litigation, discussion of legal strategy for pending IPRA lawsuit and discussion of threatened litigation on busing commitments to local communities as permitted under Section 10-15-1, H7 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Do a roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
6:25.
Okay, we're going into executive session. And we, after we get out, we will do a report. We have two issues to discuss. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Begay. Good to see you. When you're over at Rehoboth somewhere. Yes, good to see you. Board members? Let's get back to order. Need a motion to get out of executive session?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we come out of executive session.
Okay, motion's been made by Michael Schaaf to get out of executive session. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell? Ms. Manolito? Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members.
7:57.
Yeah. We're out of executive session. There are a few items that we discuss in executive session. Domain one has to do with middle college, high school. We also talked about some busing issues over at REMA. And one with another charter school that is in the works of happening. And on these issues, there was no decisions made. However, we will do some presentation PowerPoint.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I, may I make a motion that we, that on the, on the agenda, that we do item seven D before seven C? I think it's probably important that we review and discuss the middle college issues before we actually vote to take action.
Okay. That's your motion, right? Okay, motion's been made by Chris Mortensen to change the order on the agenda under new business C and D. To have item D go before C. Review, discussion, and approval of corrective action plan for middle college high school. And then after that, action to ratify and approve the final settlement agreement with middle college high school. And approval and execution of charter contract for middle college high school.
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, we've changed the order of business under new business. And we will begin with the review, discussion, and approval of corrective action plan for middle college high school. The corrective action plan is going to be shown PowerPoint. The corrective action plan is going to be shown PowerPoint. This is a draft corrective action plan. And we will go through each one of them. I think one of the things you don't see up there is the timelines. Those timelines will be inserted and there may be some tweaking of the languages, written language in that corrective action plan. Yeah. Okay. We have our superintendent and our attorney that's going to be going through the corrective action plans. And remember, these documents, the corrective action plan, the new contract, and... Okay, the corrective action plan, the new contract, and a settlement agreement, those will all become public record tonight. And I'm sure that the newspaper will have it in their reports. Andy? This is Mr. Andy Sanchez. He's an attorney that represents our district in different legal matters. Andy, thank you.
Board President Long, members of the board, superintendent. The corrective action plan is all part of the other documents that the board president was mentioning. The parties, Middle College High School, as well as the Board of Education have come to an agreement with regards to how this, how the final year of the relationship will work with regards to the relationship that exists between the Board of Education as the chartering authority under the Charter Schools Act and the charter school itself. With regards to, there is a settlement agreement that the governing council for the Middle College High School has already agreed to. We want the board, or asking the board, to approve that settlement agreement, which set forth the terms of how that relationship is going to work. Part of the conditions of how the relationship has to work is that if there's going to be a continued relationship for the 1819 school year, it has to be governed by a charter school contract, and that will also be for approval by the board. And it's already been approved by the governing council of Middle College High School. That contract will delineate the conditions upon the relationship that exists between the chartering authority and the governing council with regards to that relationship. It's all premised in giving the charter school sufficient opportunity to seek a charter through the Public Education Commission, through the PED. That will be, that will be what the contract is designed for, to provide them an opportunity to do that. However, until, in the interim of obtaining PEC approval, if that's the choice of the PEC, there are some issues that were raised during the revocation action that we, that the board, as a chartering authority under the act, wants to address. And have this document, which is a working document, to, to see if there's some actions that, and some reporting and other actions that could be taken to alleviate some of the issues that were part of the notice of the intent to revoke charter and get, in part of the settlement agreement, to satisfy so they can move forward. So with that, I do hope that they are representatives of the school here, that we could work on this document, which will, is still a working document, to address some of the findings that were of issue and then some corrective action plan. Obviously, the findings are not by the school of anything. These are findings that the chartering authority had with regards to its supervision of the school and want to address in a corrective action plan to alleviate any further issues that may arise that could harm in the school, the finances, as well as the curriculum for Middle College High School. So with that, Mr. President, I will pass it on to the superintendent to, to address some of the issues that the plan entails and whether or not the board is okay with some of these issues and put some timelines to this, if there's, if that's possible and necessary. Of course, we'll still have to work with the school to see if those are actual workable timelines and whether or not some of these things are actually within their ability to do. But we have that. We'll do the correction action plan, ask you to approve it, at least with as to changes, or if you think that there needs to be further follow-up, we can do it at your next board meeting and get the corrective action plan. However, we do ask that you approve the settlement agreement and the contract so we can move forward as required under the statute.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Mike?
President Long, members of the board, you were provided an intent, a notice of intent to revoke charter, which lays out most of the issues that were found as we continued to dig into this charter and their inappropriate actions. In addition, we also found something recently, misuse of public funds, which we'll cover within this corrective action plan. We'll go line by line. You're welcome to ask questions about how this came about, as far as the documents and evidence that we have. But if you look at the first part, this follows in line with the intent to revoke the charter, the notice. And so if you have questions about either one of those, either I or Mr. Sanchez can answer. So with the, this was put together with legal counsel, and this is just a draft. You're welcome to add or take away from. There was some comments and some suggestions that I'll give for some sort of, not a timeline, but a due date where some of these things need to be done, if you so choose to approve.
Mr. Hyatt, I'm sorry, may I just ask, who was involved with putting together this corrective action plan?
Myself and legal counsel.
Our legal counsel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So the first one, as you know, one of the major issues is there was, by the governing council of Middle College, that they delegated all authority, contractual authority, to Dr. Hunter. And so this was not only improperly done at the time, there was an attempt to change that. And now at this particular time, we are requiring, as far as corrective action plan, are suggesting to you that the governing council of Middle College take action to revoke the resolution that gave authority to Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Hyatt, would you rather go through this and ask our questions, or do you want to go by item and then ask our questions and go to the next item and ask our questions?
It's up to you. I can do it whatever way is beneficial for you.
Let him go through all of it?
I'd rather ask questions as we go, while they're relevant, yeah?
Okay.
In fact, I have a question already.
Yeah, so there's already, you can read it for yourself, I don't need to go through it, I'll just give you a quick overview. And then you are welcome to ask questions, add to, take away from, et cetera.
Okay, so this finding, action within the exclusive control of governing council's been improperly delegated to Dr. Hunter by resolution. How, I mean, how was this discovered or whatever, finding?
What happened is back in, I can't remember what the month was, but last winter, when the appeal went to the state for 20 more students. During that time, we requested and looked through the minutes of the Middle College governing board and started finding a lot of problems.
That's when it was discovered, that's when, is it in the minutes that they, I guess it says governing control improperly delegated? So it was, it was within the minutes that they, that they gave this contractual authority to Dr. Hunter?
Correct.
Okay. What types of decisions or whatever has, I mean, has, has happened since then that that would be improperly entered into, like contracts or anything like that?
Well, basically, I've mentioned this before in our board meetings, that you cannot just give a CEO or a superintendent all the authority to do whatever they want contractually. There are certain regulations, there's also certain policy, board policy, that has to be followed. And so, for example, I can't just go spend $100,000 on something. I would have to bring that to you. There would be a RFP process, and then the bids would be scored, and then you would decide who, what vendor provided those services, for example. Contracting for an entire charter, Mr. Hunter could not just say, "I want to renew my charter" without their, his own governing council saying that's what they wanted to do. So that's the issue here. You can't just give him carte blanche access to do whatever they want. Or what's the purpose of having a school board?
Well, that was going to be my question. What is there, why would they even have a council if they're giving up all their rights to one individual?
Mr. Hyatt, on these issues, contracts that Mr. Hunter may have approved, that illegally he can't approve because it needs to be approved by the board, do we have a number on, as far as how many contracts he may have did that were illegal, that the board should have approved and not him?
I don't particularly have it, I don't have a number, but one is the charter contract itself in the first place. You have to have, the governing board has to make decisions like that, whether they should exist or not or continue to exist. Most of their contracts weren't large contracts. Our board policy regulates under 60,000. The superintendent can approve. Anything over 60,000 or above obviously takes your approval.
Are there any underlying, you know, maybe procurement violations or anything like that, that, I mean, that are, that are in this as well, that you know of?
I'm not aware of any. There may be some things that would have been presented at the hearing, I couldn't speak to those, though.
Okay.
Mr. Hyatt, I know that we're doing a new contract with Middle College. Did we, was there ever a legal contract that was found for them?
We asked the state, we requested from Middle College, we looked through all of our records, all of our records, we did not find any contracts for Middle College since its inception. And it takes a contract to renew a contract. So the contract in the beginning was void in itself in that you have to have a contract in order to renew a contract by state rule.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mike.
All right, we'll go to the next one. One of the other problems that we found repeatedly throughout the board minutes, that there were several areas in which there was, the Open Meetings Act was not followed. Meeting minutes do not contain, really specific in a lot of areas, but whereas legally required to be specific, it was not contained in those minutes. So there are several things where things were changed. And several areas where there are just problems in general, there were several. And so that is why the second one is a corrective action, to make sure that Open Meetings Act is complied with and requiring oversight. Typically, a charter should not be micromanaged, but in this particular case, because of the amount, there have been improvements as of late, some of the minutes. So I believe, once their legal counsel got involved and was hired, I believe there's been a lot of improvement in that area. But again, you got to make sure you follow Open Meetings Act. And so that second item is reference to that.
Okay, so when they had meetings, any action taken by the council was never supported by roll call votes?
I can't remember all the nitty-gritty details. Again, we hired legal counsel to go through all that and compile all the evidence of each individual act or action that was done or not done. But there were several different types of things, changing, adding things in the middle of the meeting. Just, just things like that.
Mr. Hyatt, with, with just these two, these two that we're talking, that we've talked about now, Open Meetings Act and giving all power over, I, you know, I have a question as far as the board, the Middle College Board, are they required to attend trainings? And if so, are they attending their trainings regularly? Like, like as far as our board, we have, you know, all our trainings, our law conferences that we go to, do they do the same in order to know how to run their board meetings?
It appeared so. There were several documents regarding training. So I don't think it was an issue of not having training. And there, over the last year, early year ago, there was some new rules put in place that require it, or a little more stringent with respect to board training for charters. So I couldn't speak as to why they weren't followed, the rules. In comparison to the trainings that were involved, there should have been more compliance with the law. If I could go back to the first one, one of the things I'm going, things I'm going to ask you to add is when you feel it would be appropriate for these things to be done. We didn't put any due dates. But if we could go back to the first one regarding the governing council removing the signatory authority for, for all things, as they did, I think that's a pretty immediate need.
That one is to be immediate.
So what is your suggestion of when?
Yesterday.
We have a due date. Yesterday's too early. Next board meeting?
I think, I think one of the things that, one of the things that bothers me, and, you know, I think we continue, I mean, there's all the documentation that we have to support these findings. And, you know, we've gotten a black eye on a lot of these things because we kind of gave it a chance. And I think we, we continue to get beat up about it. But I think that everybody needs to know that there is documentation, correct, sir and Mr. Sanchez, that support each of these findings. We're not just throwing them out, out from a hat or anything. There is legal documentation. The code on each of these are attached. The state laws, state regulations, Open Meetings Act are all attached to these. So there, it's not...
No, I can, I can attest to the documents we put together, that legal counsel put together for the hearing, it's probably about that tall. So we would have gone through that many documents during the hearing.
Thank you.
Of the evidence. So next meeting, would that be, we can add that for number one?
Yes.
The next board meeting of Middle College?
Yes. Next one, Mike?
The next one, I think, is pretty self-explanatory, went over it, but we are asking that the full packet of information is submitted to the district before board meetings, just as it's submitted to the board members for Middle College. And then, once those meetings are done and the minutes have been approved, then those minutes will be provided to us. So that will give us notice of when they're having meetings and when the meetings have been completed and actually the minutes have been approved, which I think is important for your oversight.
Okay.
Can we have that also at the next board meeting?
Yes, we can make that immediate.
Thank you.
And so, those are public meetings, they're available, available for anybody to attend. So we're suggesting that you, or I, or others attend.
Okay, I guess the other question I have regarding meetings is, were there notices of meetings posted? And were their parents were invited to those meetings? Mike?
I couldn't speak to that. I've never seen a notice. I'm sure, I think I saw one notice this spring on their website, I'm sure they did. I think they used the newspaper to do that. I would assume, so I didn't, I did not specifically look into that myself. Any other questions on those first two items? Okay. We'll go down to the third one. Middle College admitted to, and we never agreed for them not to, they should have been following board policy, Gallup McKinley County School District Board Policy. The school district board policy. And there were, there, there wasn't enough room in the revocation document to list them, so we just listed some of them. The board policies that were not followed. And so that is going to be another requirement, that they follow GMCS board policy as they were supposed to and as they said that they did. We did a public information request. They did not provide any board policies to us because they stated that they follow ours. Yet they were not following ours in, on, in multiple ways. So they do have some governing council regu, or policy that they put together for their own charter, which is okay. But in general, they should be following our board policy. And that applies to most of the things in this revocation document with regards to such things as taking attendance, which is fundamental in a school. Board policy, there's policy on how to deal with students being removed from school, et cetera, for, for different reasons. From financial to just the regulatory actions of a district.
Mr. Hyatt, so if they have a truancy problem or behavior problem, they, would they be, what do they do if they have a behavior problem? What have they done in the past when they've had a behavior problem? What is the steps that they take? Do they come, um, report it to you? Does our hearing authority get involved? Could you tell me what they've done to their past behavior issues?
I couldn't speak for the full sixteen years of what happened. I mean, I've heard things from our employees or their employees about what took place in the past. But as of late, I think the hearing authority used to be used for disciplinary hearings. It hasn't been used since I've been here, at least. They are supposed to re, record discipline and report it to the state. There has never been a discipline report sent to the state that we can find in the last several years. So again, when they report things, they report them straight to our Stars team. The Stars team is just a flow-through. It is on them to provide the information, it flows through and goes straight to the state. So no discipline was ever recorded, so to speak on what specifically happened in the school. There's, there's documents, even graphs, that show that there's several discipline issues, but none of it's ever been recorded appropriately and given to the state as it's supposed to be. That was one of the major issues.
When, when does Middle College actually start their classes? Have they already started?
I believe it's, this year was supposed to, is supposed to be August twentieth, when UNM starts. And that was another issue that we'll, we'll cover later on, I believe. In that, there was a falsification of reporting of the number of hours that students go to. Not only that, but the number of days. All budget documents that we were able to find over the last three, four, five years all stated the wrong start dates for school. Yet they were calculating those days and the hours according to this, to meet the state requirements. I think the last document said, in one part of the document, I think a hundred and seventy-two days they go to school, another part of the same document, a hundred and seventy-five days going to school, nine hours a day they go to school. And that they start on August eighth, when we start. And I think everybody knows that UNM doesn't start till the twentieth. And no Middle College students started last week. So that's another part of the falsification of, of documents in that they're reporting numbers, hours, and days that their students did not go to school. And nine hours a day, none of their students go to school, nine hours a day.
What are they? I, I, I mean, I know you don't know what all, all the kids do up there or whatever, but what, I mean, if school started last week or whatever, but the UNM Gallup classes don't start for a couple of weeks, what are they doing?
I couldn't speak to that. The, the teachers are actually on an extended contract. So not only do they not, they typically start, they start earlier than ours do, on average. Yet they don't start, they go to sixteen weeks of school versus, I believe, our eighteen weeks. So what happens, professional development, I don't know what happens during those several weeks where the teachers are at work and students are not at school, I don't know.
But those are counted in the, the days of school?
The days are counted, they, they count, they counted like, for example, this year, I believe it was from August eighth to like May tenth or something like that. The end dates looked right, but the start dates were not when students were starting school. And so it inflated their numbers. End days. I'm using, the state actually requires number of hours. So that's, that's where the, the problem lied.
Those, I mean inflated dates or falsification of dates, or however you want to put it, I mean, what effect does that have on, on any of their paperwork or their reporting or any of, any of that stuff?
Well, the particular reports I'm talking about are their budget documents, which go through approval through you.
So that has, that has an effect on their finances?
And they're required to report to the state how many hours their students go to school. And the calendar and et cetera. It's all required in the budget documents, so.
Any other questions?
So we got off, off track a little bit, we're still on number three. Is there any other questions about number three as far as policies? Uh, what we're asking is that, all the policies that, I've heard, I've heard both. Whether there are policies or not in place at Middle College. According to the IPRA, there are no policies in place there. But if there are, they need to be taken out, they need to follow our board policy other than, again, those things that govern their Board of Education governing body. Due date for that one?
Next meeting?
Next meeting, okay.
Yeah, the next meeting, I mean, that should be fairly straightforward.
Any other questions on number three? If not, we'll go to number four.
All right, the fourth section, uh, kind of goes back to what we just talked about. We touched on, is that for many years, no attendance was taken or reported to the state. If it was taken, it wasn't recorded and sent to the state as it's supposed to be. It's a fundamental part of educating students, you take attendance and the state requires it, then you report those numbers to the state. It affects many things, but one of which is your school grade. There are points given for attendance. So if you don't, if you're not reporting attendance, then you are, in essence, inflating your school grade. Not only that, but it, then you start having problems. Uh, in their board minutes, it talks about removing students from the school due to attendance, yet you've never taken attendance. Or this last year and a half, there was some attendance taken, but on a, on a very, seemed to be very sporadic. And students being removed from school, there was no, there was no attendance record that sh, that even got close to the point where you would start talking to a student about going through the process of them not being in school anymore. There's a specific process the state requires before a student could potentially not be in school due to attendance. And that process was never followed either. That we can see, although no discipline was recorded and no attendance, or most of the attendance wasn't recorded, so. Hard to know what took place.
So with these students who were released from that school due to attendance, could they come back and actually sue? I mean, if they were removed from the school for attendance, but they never took attendance? I mean, I don't, I don't understand.
I don't know how it would affect a student. What the state would require when a school district or a school grade that had been inflated because of not taking attendance? That might be the bigger issue. So again, those are numbers that are flowed through, they get sent to our Stars team and they regurgitate that straight to the state. So if you'll see on their school grade, it's always over ninety-eight percent. Attendance appears as attendance wasn't taken for any college class. For example, CCTE at the UNM Gallup, there is attendance taken for all of our students that go there. No student, no attendance was taken for Middle College students in any college class that we can find.
Mr. Hyatt?
And there's also teachers teaching those classes and attendance wasn't taken in most of those classes either.
So the corrective action plan for this one here about the charter will accurately and timely submit daily attendance in Power School. So, I mean, these kids that have, I mean, school started, I guess, on the eighth or whatever you said, but UNM Gallup doesn't actually start until when?
Twentieth.
And so are there, that's just like, like they're all absent for two weeks? Is that how that works? Or how, I mean, how will this work in practice?
No, I would, uh, obviously they start on August twentieth, so they should start taking attendance at that particular point.
Okay.
What happens with budget documents? Obviously, we're in the middle of an audit right now. How that gets cleared up from the past or if it needs to be, that's some, that's a decision that's going to have to be made by the state.
Does that put them in a bind in terms of like the, you know, total number of hours that kids are in school during the year? The mandated hours and things like that?
There are ways to do it properly. And we requested all waivers that have been submitted to the state. You can get a waiver for a number of hours a student goes to school. But there is no, there have been no waivers to the state for that. So typically, a student, I would say, right now, on average, if they're taking college classes, they're going to school and counting the tutoring time that they require, about twenty hours a week. And typically, a student to get enough hours in the school year for high school students, about thirty hours a week. So there's about a third less hours that they're taking. So the way around that would be to get a waiver. No waivers were ever done, so. And again, no attendance was ever recorded. So the, the. Go ahead.
But one of the questions I have, Mr. Hyatt, is if we did this, if a school did this, did not report their attendance, what would the ratification be of, of, of us? And how come it's not being, how come they're getting away with it while we can't even get away with it? Because if we didn't report our attendance for years, we would, I mean, they probably would come on, come down hard on us. And I just don't understand why, um, they're not taking attendance and it's not being reported.
I couldn't answer that. Other than, if somebody's not taking attendance, then it should be reported to the state. Again, it affects several things, but one is, um, school grade. Not a lot, but it does affect it.
So just to spin off, off of Priscilla's question. If we don't report student attendance and all that to the state, what are the consequences?
I couldn't tell you that, the state would have to answer that. But it is a requirement to retake attendance and report attendance for many, many reasons.
Well, I do know that with us, I mean, attendance is very important and we go by certain days. I know, um, on certain days, we have to make sure, for sure, our attendance is taken in order for funding. I mean, attendance has to do with funding and, um, therefore.
Well, the enrollment has to do with funding typically, unless you're talking about transportation and attendance on those.
Transportation for, I mean, attendance.
Again, but if you're not taking attendance, again, that's where we're saying, well, what else, what else is taking place? And so. Any questions on that one? Other than, we can say, obviously, it's going to start when school starts on the twentieth?
Yeah. You know, the questions on number four? I think, uh, number four and number five, pretty much, uh.
On the second part of number four, just so you know, obviously, you want them to take attendance. They can come up with a plan of how they're going to do that. But the second part of that, the charter will submit an update, or Middle College will submit an updated parent-student handbook to the superintendent so we can review it to make sure it's following policy and the law.
Do they have one currently?
They have some handbooks, yes. They do have a parent handbook, I believe. They talk a lot about attendance and a lot of things, but it was never recorded. Or rarely recorded.
Do we need to, as, as part of this, I mean, there, it looks like there's going to be some reporting to, to our school board here, a reporting regiment. Do we need to, do, do any reports or, or applications or anything need to be amended with the state to, you know, to, just to change the fact that, you know, it was like two weeks that no, you know, that nobody's going to school, that they said they were going to school? Or, I mean, is there anything like that that needs to? I mean, as part of our board's responsibility as oversight with this, do we need to redo any, any paperwork with the state in regards to that?
Um, I would want legal counsel to talk about that particular item. I don't know if Andy, you want to touch on that of what? Is there any liability or is there any other oversight or things that need to be done to make sure things are reported for either past things or things that happened currently this school year?
Well, like I said before, it's probably for the state. Need to do whatever they need to, uh, with regards to state reporting. Obviously, the PED computes school grades and does that stuff and has the attendance and some sort of case, certification for truancy. So those would be the issues. Uh, the only issue, um, you know, um, obviously, when we check attendance, we need to find out if there's any students that, uh, that should have been dealt with, under the truancy statute. And if they've been dealt, I'm not sure if that even exists, if there's anybody there. But suppose a kid was removed for attendance there, but never came back to us, then, then we might have some issues with whether or not there is certain notification, parental notifications that go along with the truancy statute that have to be required so that, uh, compulsory attendance act can be enforced. So we'll have to check on that.
Okay. Any other questions? Go to the next one.
Next section, um, discuss, something we already just discussed, also with regards to reporting student discipline. Self-explanatory. By rule, the state requires it. You should have a recording of that. I think the only doc, we requested documents, the only thing that was sent to us is a couple items on plagiarism, some documents, there were UNM forms. No other discipline was recorded or given to us for anything. I think we were asked for the last six or seven years, four or five, six, seven years, somewhere in there, and no documents were ever either, either even compiled or reported to us. They said everything is in Power School. There's, there was nothing in there as far as discipline that gets reported to the state. So why that is, I couldn't say. I don't, I don't understand why you wouldn't record your discipline. It's just another fundamental thing that you do as a school.
Well, do you, I mean, there's people that have complained to us as board members that their child was suspended or expelled. So what procedures did they go by? And how, I mean, I just don't understand how they can reinforce a suspension or expulsion if they're not even reported? I mean, there, there's got to have been something that went wrong. Why were they expelled, but there's not, it's not even reported to the state?
Nothing. That's all I can say, except for those two. If I remember right, plagiarism documents, everything else, nothing was reported. Nothing was recorded either, other than those few documents. So as far as the correction on that, obviously, you need to record your discipline. And, um, make sure they send that to us so we can verify it, making sure that records are accurate. In addition to that, we're requiring that our GMCS hearing officer will take care of any hearing. So if a student does something that requires some sort of a hearing that's significant, then our hearing authority will take care of that to make sure it's done properly and legally. So going back to your question before, what ramifications are there? A student could have, there could be a problem there. If a student was removed from school for attendance or removed from school from discipline, but you never recorded it, and that caused that student some sort of damage, they would probably have a claim.
Just so, so that you're aware of the implications and the importance of it, is that the Charter School Act actually has a provision that if the charter school has expelled a student, they're automatically expelled from you. So they can't come back here, they're expelled from the public schools as well. So if there has been expulsions, we need to know about it because we need to rectify if there's some issues that we have because they're official, they're technically under the statute, also expelled from the public schools.
Okay, thank you, Andy. So if a student is expelled, that individual is gone from Middle College and our school district, and they're just out there, uh, maybe staying home? If there's no other options available to them, right?
True.
I guess the other question, uh, on that, besides discipline expulsion and others, is abuse of children. You know, some of us board members, we've heard that there was, and, uh, one of the students abused, but was never reported. Have you found anything on that, Mike?
I'm not going to discuss any particular issues with student discipline. I don't think that would be appropriate at this time. But there, there have been some significant things that have happened that were never reported that I think caused some of the greatest concern in our investigation into the, the discipline area. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
So that's another one, I would say, I would suggest to the board that's done immediately. In addition, at the end, it's noted that they'll follow our discipline handbook. In addition, at the end, it's noted that they'll follow our discipline handbook, our GMCS policies, we've already talked about that. And again, use our hearing authority, our hearing officer, for any significant violations of board policy.
Okay. Are there questions? Not, let's go down to number six.
The concern that came from the board was regarding the demographics of Middle College and the significantly lower Native American population in the school. And that was an area that was a concern for you. When you look at the numbers, it was concerning. The only time it really significantly increased, when we increased the number of students by thirty. Then there was an increase, which was then acclaimed that it was doubled. It was doubled because we added thirty more students.
Yeah, I know the last...
And it wasn't quite doubled either, so...
Yes. The last time I saw the figures on that, it was, we had about over thirty percent.
I think it was thirty-seven in the fall and forty-one or forty in the spring for the actual Native American enrollment.
Okay, I guess also on this issue, since you have a number of Navajo students, to me, that doesn't reflect on the board or the council itself. With the number of Navajos attending that school, there should be more than just one member, one Navajo member on the council.
That's not for us to decide. That's a process that they go by to fill their governing council, so I'm not gonna address that.
Mr. Hyatt, I just wanna say, this is almost finishing up my fourth year as a board member. When I became a board member, this was a real... This was a concern. Four years ago, before all this... This stuff happened. I remember talking with this, with Titus Nez and Mr. Mitchell, about the numbers of Native Americans in this Middle College. We had lots of concerns that were being addressed to us. As a new board member, I was very concerned and wondering, why are we not... Why doesn't the demographics match our student population with... And, you know, they reported, I was at a meeting in Navajo Nation, when they reported, yes, our numbers are going up. And I think that's one thing that I... It's very disturbing to me that they're saying it is, especially if this grant, this funding and all this charter school is supposed to be at risk to students. And it's not demographically correct. And they said they would match the demographics. And they still haven't. From four years ago to now, it's still the same. Yes, it may went up because our... We increased their enrollment from seventy to a hundred. That's what made it go up. And they're out there trying to recruit, but how do they know that they're gonna, due to it being a lottery, how do they know, again, if that's gonna go up? So there were some things that were not totally reported to the different committees at... In Navajo Nation. So that's what really upsets me about this, again, is it's still not up, and they're still not serving and giving the opportunity to our Native American students.
And it's kinda gone up and down. I think in 2011, I think it was forty-seven percent Native American. So that went down to like twenty-six, and now it's up to forty-one. Since that time. So again, this one's a little more vague. We're just asking that they work out a plan. You asked several times for a plan. Nothing was ever provided to you. You offered suggestions. Nothing was ever provided to you about what was being done to service more students, whether it's Native American, or whether it's economically disadvantaged, which they have a high economically advantaged population. And so, again, we'll see what they come with. When would you like that to be completed by?
Mr. Hyatt, it looks like, I mean, with this one and the next one about, you know, there are questions about the lottery system and, you know, and kinda what's going on, how it exactly works. I mean, that seems reasonable to provide both this one and the next finding, probably by the next... I mean, by the next school board meeting. I mean, it's just documentation...
I just don't know when their next board meeting is.
Oh, okay.
So we may wanna... On this one, we may wanna pick a... Maybe by... Done by... First meeting in September, or something like that?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. I mean, we're talking, like I said, this plan and the next one, you know, with the next requirement there. I mean, we're talking about just documentation of how the lottery is conducted, how the waitlist works, who's on the waitlist, how do you get on the waitlist? And we're talking about documentation there.
Right.
They're not... They don't have to make anything up, just show us the documentation of how...
Show us the process.
How it's done.
Make sure it's equitable.
So, board member, Martin, so you're asking for them to give a report to us from... To come here and do a report to us?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it says here in the corrective action plan requirements, it just talks about that they'll provide detailed explanation and all documentation to the superintendent about the lottery process. I mean, I'd just like to see that. If it... I mean, if it is in fact a fair lottery process, then, I mean, you have to think about logically. I mean, I understand the concern over demographics, but if it's a random lottery, and we find through their documentation that it is in fact a random lottery, if that's the case, then, you know, I don't know how that's going to affect the demographics. There's other things underlying that are going to affect the demographics besides the lottery. If it's a lottery, I mean, you're subject to the people that are in... That are in the lottery, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I mean, there's other stuff besides how the lottery works that's going to affect the demographics.
Yeah.
One thing they didn't say to the meeting in Navajo Nation was, it does... The lottery doesn't work when you have a sibling that's already attending Middle College. That's... The siblings can't... Are automatically grandfathered in into Middle College if they wanna attend. So that wasn't mentioned. So I think some of these things need to be brought up, because I don't think that's fair. I think even the siblings should go back into the lottery and need to be drawn again, because I think that, you know, I mean, we... A lot of our complaints that we're getting is that this... Something fishy is happening, and I don't know. We need to find out exactly the detail, explanation to that. So I'm glad that's on there, too.
It probably just starts simply by looking at the process and analyzing the process, and then go from there. There may be some tweaks that we can suggest when we get the documentation.
There was also at the very last line in the corrective action on this section, that we just wanna make sure that their charter was set up to serve tenth through twelfth graders. So even if a twelfth grader senior comes to the school, that they have to accept them this year, if they're a part of the lottery, or they're next on the waiting list. If there is a waiting list. The next one is, we've already talked about this one. Talks about the falsification of their budget documents for hours of instruction, school days, calendar, et cetera. So they're gonna submit a new budget to the superintendent for approval to include accurate information with regard to instructional hours and days. Self-explanatory. We could have that one also do the first meeting in... Actually, that one probably should be done sooner than that, since school starts, I'd say, next board meeting.
Sure, next board meeting, yeah.
We could do it in the next couple of weeks, or something like that, two weeks? It shouldn't be that difficult to do.
Change a couple four months.
Before school starts.
Yeah. So we're down to number nine, cash balance.
This one was interesting, in that their budget this year, I'm just gonna give approximates, about one point three million dollars from the SEG. And they have about six hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars that they haven't expended. About four hundred thousand-ish is in a construction account. And about two hundred thousand, I think, is just like a cash balance. And so, one of the concerns was you're not providing transportation or the things that you could potentially be using either to improve your performance, your student scores, because they're dropping significantly, actually dropping more than any other high school in the district and most of the state. But also, that money should be used to help students. So when you have a forty-eight percent cash carryover, and I think Kim Brown came here to our board meeting and said it's being... It's gonna be used for a educational program in the future. Not a very good use of public funds, if that's what you're doing. And so, educational programs should be provided for the students. And so it appears as though this money is being used for an alter... If it's in a construction account, I don't know if that's an educational program or not. But the remedy is, that we are suggesting, is that they'll give us a long-term and short-term plans for their funds.
Mr. Hyatt, this, I mean, this cash balance, I mean, this is something that would be spotted in their budget. Is the budget one of those things that we talked about earlier that was not approved by the... By the governing board?
No, the budget was approved, if I remember right. It seems like their budgets were approved every year that I looked. So the financial... Some of the financial stuff seemed to be okay, just the budget documents weren't accurate.
Right.
I mean, that was the major problem with the budget documents. And then this particular item is, what are you doing with all this cash? Why aren't you using it to serve more economically disadvantaged or at-risk students, which is what your charter was designed for in the first place?
Well, I mean, it's disturbing, 'cause one of the... You know, when we talked to Dr. Hunter, when he was here, we visited with him about, you know, providing meals and transportation and things like that. And they talked about not having the funds for it.
I guess... Any questions on that one?
My question is, you know, they have, what, six hundred thousand put aside or in savings? But yet, when our school district tried to put a little money aside, then the state comes in and takes it. I mean, don't... Who... Don't they have that... Are we, as Gallup McKinley County, since we're the governing board, can we just go in and take that? And use it? I mean, and tell them to use it for their students in this manner, rather than them being able to save up six hundred thousand, and nobody else can do that? I mean, we can't. I mean, the state would come in and take that money from us if we tried to save six hundred thousand dollars aside?
Some eyebrows would be raised, yeah, definitely. If we had forty-eight percent cash carryover, we obviously... I think we had a sixteen percent, because we had impact aid coming in all of a sudden, a bunch of, like, three years' worth. And the governor said we were hoarding cash, when we just got received all those payments, and then they took some.
Just for context, if we held back forty-eight percent, what... I mean, how... Approximately, how much would that be, that we'd have stashed in the bank?
Forty-eight million dollars.
Wow.
Over a hundred million dollar SEG, I'm just throwing out approximates.
Mike, now, the six hundred thousand dollars, would that be, at least, cover some of the students' expense? You know, what Middle College was asking for? They were asking us for twenty additional position? Would that money have gone toward that? Or either to buy one or two buses to recruit students from the county?
There's several things that could be done with that money. Professional development, services to students, items, transportation, food, you name it. That's a lot of money for a one point three million dollar budget.
Cause we did the supplies for our students at the first day of school. Would they be able to use that money to help their students with supplies?
Sure.
Calculators, or whatever they may need?
Mm-hmm.
I think...
Any of those items?
So are we able to tell them that, you know, maybe they could use some of that money towards their students as far as supplies and stuff that would help them educationally?
I don't wanna get that detailed into... We already have our plate full with correcting the problems, or being oversight for their correction of problems. I think we... That's getting in too much of the nitty-gritty. I suggest giving them the leeway, at least to provide us a plan of what they're going to use that money for, what educational program, as was stated, is it's going to be used for, and how, and when. So a short-term, long-term plan would be, I think, appropriate. The only thing that we added on the end is that cash balance cannot be used for capital outlay, 'cause that's obviously what they said it wasn't going to be used for, yet four hundred thousand was in a capital outlay. Appears to be in a capital outlay account or fund, so...
Okay.
Next one. This one I might have Andy talk about, Mr. Sanchez talk about, on staff being paid. But what was happening is, they're supposed to be using at Middle College the pay scales of the school district. And there are several people's pay that was not within the pay scales of the school district. That's the quick way to say it. So we are requiring that they change that and actually follow the pay scales. Part of that was, and we saw this affecting the performance of the school. When you had the CEO... Three years ago, there was a CEO, a principal, and assistant principal. And now, there's a part-time CEO, and that's it. Maybe that's enough. But when the school's declining in school grades so rapidly, and the test scores, then it appears as that could be reflect... That could be a reflection of the CEO not performing their duties as far as a CEO, and using that time to do counseling, or teaching, or whatever else it might be. So we're requiring that they follow the salary schedules. We need some more information on how they're doing personnel and how they're paying, 'cause there were some weird things happening with people being used for quarter-time activities that appears that they weren't being paid appropriately for. I think we had a secretary, a person in a secretary role, making forty-seven thousand dollars-ish, maybe more. It seemed to be something wonky's going on there, so... So that needs to be all explained. The documents show that there's just some things that shouldn't have been done as far as the financial part of it, but also some of the activities that were being done by personnel.
So my question with that one, Mike, is if they're paying those kind of scales that don't correlate with our district, and if they're already signed into contract, what happens then?
They're bound by the contract. So there's only some things that they can adjust at this particular point. And one of them, Andy speak to the specifics about Mr. Hunter, needs to actually be the CEO and not try to get paid for doing teaching duties while you're getting paid as the CEO.
The charter schools have to operate their own personnel system, so they're obligated to their contract. The only thing that would be of issue is if the contracts have issues of which there is not... There's nothing being gained in return. In other words, if it's just being paid for no work, will probably render parts or all the contract void. So we have to take a look at exactly how they're doing it. With regards to Dr. Hunter, the real issue was he had a partial FTE, where he shared other duties and responsibilities, but there was no documentation that he actually performed these alternative duties. Well, that's an anti-donation problem, because you can't be paid for services not rendered. So what they would like to do is have the administration be what it is, and have it as a full-time FTE, as an administrator, to perform those functions. With regards to any teaching, that may have gone on. There's some issues with regards to whether he's teaching... If he's teaching some of the classes, and there's kids that are not part of Middle College High School, there could be some issues with regards to whether or not you're giving a donation to the university in conducting those courses. So that would be some of the issues that need to be resolved in terms of looking at the pay scales and what the... And who's being allocated to what functions with regards to that. You know, while having a student from Middle College High School in a particular class, being taught by one of their employees, the real issues then become whether or not, you know, during office hours. If you're providing office hours to a U and M student who gains no benefit, they can't be paid by us, because that's an improper donation to the university. You're giving a gift or a donation to them if you're providing that. So those are those type of issues that have to be resolved. But there's still a lot to be... Know exactly how they staff, and how they teach, and how they allocate, and who's doing what for U and M Gallup, and who are... Also similarly, what U and M Gallup is doing with regards to any high school classes.
Okay. Any other questions? Go on to the next one, Mike.
The next one, um, over the years, there's been several changes to the organizational chart of how things function at Middle College, and none of that has ever been shared with or explained to or got approval from the board regarding the way that the, the school was structured initially throughout the years. So I mentioned one where they had C E O and a principal and assistant principal, now they only have a partial C E O and none of the other two positions. At one particular point, the finances were overseen by Galloping County Schools, business officials here in our district. Then all of a sudden, a few years ago, I think about three years ago, all of a sudden they had a half-time, or four years ago, a half-time business official. I mean, then when they got thirty more students, they doubled it to a full-time business, business official, which is really about a third, maybe half a job, and now it's double that. There was never any approval anywhere that we can find, at least in minutes or anything, where it shows that there was some sort of approval by anybody that shows that there's going to be a business official position approved where we're not going to take care of the finances and they are. And I think, um, there's definitely been, not a lot, but a few things financially that were done that are, that are significant in the problem. One of the, one of which being the budget documents, which are, which are significant. So basically there, we're requiring them to provide an updated organizational chart. And that anything change, that changes on the organizational chart has to go through you as a school board oversight entity, so. That one's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay. Any other questions? Then, oh, hey, let's go down to the next one, Mike, number twelve.
One of the issues with assets is that the charter may, stated that it could not locate about two hundred fifteen thousand dollars' worth of assets that were from past purchases. And so we are requiring that they provide an updated inventory in December of two thousand eighteen. That takes time to go through to make sure you have it all in place. It's a tedious process. Uh, but we want to make sure nothing's walking off out of the school, and they should be doing the same. Two hundred fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money worth of assets that is not accounted for. Those are public funds paid by the public taxpayers.
Okay, any questions on that, board members? Nada. Okay, let's go down to the next one, Mike.
So this next one is basically about finances. One of the most recent things that we found that was, just shows, it's, it's definitely going to be an audit finding, I can almost guarantee that. And some others, just not spending money appropriately through the procurement process or paying for things appropriately. Uh, we had found in winter of last year, I think it was in December, we had a, we found that a person was paid to go to board training in the first part of the month, yet they were never actually voted in as a board member until later that month. So two problems there. You're using taxpayer dollars to pay for somebody that was never approved as a board member in the first place, which is a significant problem. Number two, how do you pay for somebody that was never voted in yet and stating that they should be going to board training? So either there was a rolling corm or they were choosing people before they were actually approved in board meetings, or somebody was being selected and pushed through. I, I, I couldn't speak to exactly the reasons for that, but it's really odd. I mean, it's a misuse of public funds. You can't pay for somebody before Mr. Long was voted in as a board member and, and was sworn in. We couldn't have paid for him to go to training on behalf of the district before that. We'd have to wait after he was sworn in and elected by, uh, the public before we could pay, use public taxpayer, pair of dollars to send him to a trip to get training somewhere, for example. And so that speaks to potentially a whole host of issues. If that's happening, that's a simple thing that you know you should not do. If that's happening, what else is happening? I'm not saying that there is anymore, that's a bunch of those, uh, but in just the short time we looked at, a few years of minutes, we found just that one. So we're requiring that they do a special audit by the state auditor's office to make sure that their funds and everything's clear, so they're already finding it's cleared up and documented, uh, so it's transparent, so we can move forward.
Mr. Hyatt, just for our, I mean, for our information, how are, how are, uh, board members? I mean, are, the board member selection process up there, is it a, an election or an appointment, or how does it work?
Uh, basically, you could find anybody and have them come in and the board, put them on the agenda, and the board could vote them in or vote, not vote them in. There's no election that I'm aware of any process like that. That's the way it's set up in the, the rules for charters. Um, I think that, I, after looking at these minutes, I'm sure this is happening other places, I think that's unfortunate. I think they should be elected personally. Because then you run into these problems where you can pad your board, basically, where you are picking who you want on your board. I'm not saying that happened in this particular case, but you can see how that could happen pretty easily, and those are the people that are renewing your contract, and those are the people that are spending funds. So you can see the problem when you don't have elected officials governing a school entity.
Do charter school board members get, get stipends or mile reimbursements?
I'm going to have Mr. Sanchez answer what the possibilities are of that.
Andy?
There is the ability for, uh, charter schools as well as local school boards to have a, uh, to have a nominal fee, uh, for that purpose. Some school districts use it as a, um, scholarship fund, some do other things, other school district, other school districts, including charter schools, will take the, redeem the mileage and the board members take them. Uh, with regards to that, it's limited by, all by, uh, state rules and regulations with regards to how much money you can get for a board meeting.
So do we know, Andy, if this particular, um, charter does do that?
Um, it would be in the financial documents, the expenditures, we could certainly take a look at whether or not they do it. I don't, I'm not sure if that was a, it certainly did not rise to the top as a potential issue of, of any abuse with regards to that, so. It, it would be a question of whether or not they follow the rules and procedures with regards to, to that allocation of money.
Well, a, a lot of these, I don't know, I mean, it, I don't know if it's necessarily a question or a statement, but I mean, a lot of these, these findings are disturbing on their own, um, but when you, when you add them, add them together, you know, where there's no real elections, the, you know, the board voted to give, uh, Dr. Hunter, you know, ultimate control over contracts. Dr. Hunter is the C E O, a teacher, a counselor, he's doing other stuff at U N M Gallup. I mean, it's like all of them together are ugly.
Just one example of when we started looking at things. There's just a host of those types of things that are concerning collectively and individually at times. Next one?
Next one.
Uh, the next one, um, is regarding at-risk students. This specific charter school was initially created to serve homeschool students and at-risk students. That is by design, and so there's at-risk funds that are generated through the funding formula for the state of Mexico. And there are very few, if any, and maybe not none, I don't know, sure if Ms. Hanks can speak to this. Did we find any at-risk students at Middle College? I don't believe there were any. The qualifications is that you're E L L Title I eligible and, uh, mobility, there's a mobility factor in there.
This is special, this is special money for at-risk students that's just being used wherever?
It's money that's generated through the funding formula.
Okay.
Uh, but if you're a school that was designed to serve at-risk students, according to what the state defines as at-risk, and you don't have any, that's questionable in itself. But then you're also, what are you using those funds for, for at-risk? Are you, are you targeting them in any way? And so if you don't have any at-risk students, I mean, obviously you can't, you're not attracting at-risk students, you're not attack, attracting very many economically disadvantaged, you're not, you have a very undiverse demographics, according to the, the county. The money as a whole should probably be used differently in order to meet what you created the school to serve as far as students and services, so.
To me, that's, um, real interesting, you know, I would, I would like, I don't know, I know it's probably impossible, but to actually see the very first contract of Middle College and its full purpose. Because I know that Middle College was designed for actual at-risk students. And these were students who had trouble in school, who were ready to be kicked out of school, who had all kinds of absences and, and were troubled students. And this Middle College was, the purpose of it was to help these students, to keep them in school, and this was high at-risk students, was the main purpose for Middle College. And I know that was the very first contract that was put into effect for that, for Middle College. So I don't know what ever ha, I don't ever, um, I know, I don't know, um, if Ms. White, I know she was one of the first, um, principals up there. She probably knows, you know, what that college, I mean, what it was, the purpose actually was for. I don't know what ever happened to that and why we no longer have those students who are at high risk attending Middle College as far as dropouts or trying to keep them in school.
Dr. White, could you give a quick rundown of why that school was created from your perspective as a principal there in the second year of its existence?
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt, members of the board. Yes, I was a principal of year two way back in two thousand three, two thousand four, I believe. It was the second year of its, its existence, and at that time I was hired as the principal. We had about twenty, twenty-five students total, and majority of those students there were at risk. We had students, were targeting students who have dropped out, have been kicked out, have been expelled, suspended, or just illusion with school as a whole. So we were looking on everywhere for students that were, are just wandering and looking around. I know the counselor at that time, she and I were looking for students, wondering where they were so that we can say, here's another opportunity for you to get not only your high school diploma, but also hi, get college credits as well. And I recall at that time, we had, there was no transportation, and we had students coming in. I recall one young man coming in from Crystal, New Mexico area. He was catching the Navajo Transit bus and hitchhiking to and from U N M Gallup. And there were a couple of them from down in Rayma Zuni area. They also were hitchhiking and catching rides here and there to get to school. And we were working with students like that so that they have a different type of attendance, um, expectations because a lot of times they did not have transportation, but they managed to, to complete their, their courses at that year. I was only there for one year.
So, so my question is, did whatever happen to that contract? I mean, when, when did it change? Do we know?
Uh, Mr. Mitchell, I do not know when that changed because I was only there, like I said, for one year. And I did not look back to see how well it was doing or where it went, but I do know it has changed from the original concept.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think, um, for me, this was another one of the things that, um, four years ago, again, that bothered me, um, because we have parents in our rural areas, oh, I shouldn't really say our rural areas, even here in, um, the city limits that really need help. They're single parents, um, maybe parents with disabilities that are not even getting their, they can't even get into this college or this, uh, Middle College because, um, even though it was built for them. And they, they're the ones that need this, the, the assistance with trying to get associate college degrees, um, college credits, but yet we're, the people that can afford it, the people that have the money are getting this free education for their kids. And that was another thing that was not addressed to our Navajo Nation, that, that it's not at-risk students. Some of these students are privileged students that parents can afford their college education, but yet we're giving them, we're giving them these college credits. And I, you see, I'm sorry, our kids, start talking Navajo, our kids that really need it are not getting them. And this was addressed four years ago too, and it's still the same. They haven't changed it. So I, that, um, another one that I totally disagree with, and I hope, I don't know how they're going to change it, but I want to see the plan of how this, they're going to be changing and giving these opportunities to at-risk students, what it was supposed to be meant for.
There probably not going to be a whole lot of changes this year, and this is last year, there'll be an existence as a G M C S charter, um, district charter. Uh, so they'll have to address that with the P E C, I'm guessing, if they, if they apply for a state charter.
Okay. Any questions?
We've missed a few as far as timeframes on this, we'll go back really quick, but the last one, uh, again, we're talking about at-risk students, and so they're going to need to use those monies for professional, we just suggested, because they can't probably change their at-risk situation, they're obviously not meeting the needs of what they were created for. Uh, they are serving a certain population of students. And so we are going to require that they use those funding, monies for professional development to at least improve the student scores. Again, we had a presentation on this, sixty percent of the students over the last two years that went into Middle College from G M C S lost proficiency. These are students that typically, that are proficient in the first place. That's who Middle College is attracting, these are not at-risk students. And when sixty percent of them are losing their proficiency, when they go to the school, then we felt that, let's try to ensure that money's being, going towards professional development to help the instruction become better.
Other questions, Dunge? Nada, okay. Thank you, Mike. Uh, we've gone through.
We're, we're, we've got a few more things to do really quick. We need to pick times, or you can just delegate me to pick some general timeframes for these to be completed.
I think that would be the sensible thing to do is to have you.
There's some things that are obvious, they gotta be done before school starts, or some things that are going to take time, like assets and things like that.
Add some timelines to it, and any recommendations, insert them in there?
We've recognized already that this is a, you know, a, a draft and a, a working document. So I mean, I think that makes sense for some of these things, for you to come up with timelines that, that really are reasonable. I mean, I think this is, I, I don't know, I'll, I'll talk about that in a minute.
The last section, I just want to make sure that we're, you're, you're clear on is although there is state-required training, uh, there's obviously a lack of, um, either knowledge or willingness to follow the rules as far as some of these areas. And so we're going to require more training for the staff, especially administrative staff, so that they are up to speed with what should be happening in the, in, in their school.
Mr. Hyatt, I have a question again, um, probably pertaining more to staffing. So how do they pay for, do they help, do they compensate the U N M staff that are be, that the students are in? How do they pay for them, the students that are taking college courses if they're not one of, a teacher that is from Middle College? I don't know if I'm explaining that right.
They pay tuition, just like they were a college student.
Okay, so they're, so who, who pays that? Parents or the Middle College?
Middle College. Out of their S E G funds. So the last section is about, um, the first part is about that we are going to require that we get written reports or verbal reports for each board meeting from here on out for this year. And I'd like to tighten that language a little bit in that we could do written reports for sure. We could edit that line and say, written reports for sure, unless we ask for a verbal, uh, report. That way questions can be asked, um, by invitation. So we're not going to necessarily have a verbal report every meeting unless you want that, uh, but at least a written report. So if I could change that sentence to be at least a written report every meeting, and then, um, as needed, an invitation for a verbal report, so questions can be answered or asked.
Okay, that will work.
Sounds good. And then as far as.
Can I, Mr. White, can I also include that we, I know it's in here, we went over it a little bit ago, but I would like to reiterate and say. a little bit ago, but I would like to reiterate and say, I want their, um, request for their minutes and their, their whole board packet, um, to be included, sir.
I can forward all that information to you when I receive it. The last section just goes over the specific trainings that their staff will have to receive. So we're ax- ask, requiring that the governing council receive an additional two hours to the trainings that are required for this next year. We're also requiring that they get Stars Conference, or, or Stars Training, so they know what, they know what they should be reporting. Um, we'll also have the business manager attend budget workshops, I think she already does, but, uh, we also need to have training on anti-donation and Governmental Conduct Act, uh, for New Mexico, because there's problems there. I think some of them may do that, I can't remember what all the trainings were, but every member requiring that they attend the New Mexico College of Charter Schools annual training, um, and requiring that Middle College Administration get training by us on students' right and disciplinary procedures. Number six, uh, we're requiring the administrators of Middle College, um, or teachers to attend equity for multilingual learners or lesson planning for language learners. Uh, number seven, as you can see, FERPA training, and the last one is, um, you can read it for yourself, but basically so that they, uh, that they get some additional training for, for finance, which would typically be the CEO and the business manager, because of the significant issues that we found.
Okay.
So that's the draft of the corrective action plan. Again, if you wanna make a motion for that and approve that later this evening. Um, if you have any other questions about the revocation document, or if there are some items that you feel we have not covered, as far as things that we're concerned about-
Mr. Hyatt, I just would like to request that when we get a final copy of these corrective action and our contract and the settlement agreement, um, these will all be public documents, right?
They're public documents, absolutely.
I would like, um, to request that all of them be submitted, um, to our local chapters in our area, um, so they can also, and also the Hess Committee, the human, or the Health, Education, Human Services Committee, and the council, please.
Absolutely.
Gushim.
I think next, we would probably have Mr. Sanchez kind of explain what's transpired and what's being presented this evening, so you have a little, you're clear on, um, what you're voting on this evening.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, superintendent, uh, the settlement agreement, mutual release and full indemnifying agreement is a, is a settlement agreement between the two parties, which is the Board of Education and the governing council for Middle College High School. And it sets forth the conditions of the settlement agreement to put in abeyance the revocation action pending satisfaction of the agreement with regards to the settlement agreement and the contract. So this is not a, uh, an issue of, of a, uh, the revocation action, it will still be in abeyance while this contract, uh, this agreement is in, is being enforced and being satisfied. Obviously, the, the goal is for Middle College High School, uh, their purpose is they wanna get in front of the PEC and request an application to be a state charter school and be under the governing authority of the PEC. We're gonna be asking you to accept the settlement agreement, which has already been approved by the governing council. Attached to that settlement agreement is the actual charter contract that was negotiated between the Board of Education, which you will approve tonight in Middle College High School, that has also been approved and signed by the Middle College High School. That will dictate the actual terms and conditions of the relationship that exists between them for their, for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. It has the provisions, it has, um, like, for example, the provision of a, a liaison, which the parties will designate to help assist in furtherance of completing the contract. The contract cannot be altered in terms of its length, it cannot be altered in terms of its material conditions, uh, with regards to it, because it is just a, it's a placeholder to keep everything legal while they operate for this final school year under your chartering authority, uh, while they seek an application with the PEC. So with that, uh, Mr. Board President, I would ask that the, uh, um, the board go ahead and take action with regards to the settlement agreement and the contract, and that the board authorize the Board President to sign on behalf of the board, so that we can get these two documents done in terms of completing the settlement agreement. With that, we will ask the board to also, um, we'll do it by administrative action, we'll also take down the, uh, upcoming hearing that's scheduled for the sixteenth. That meeting will be, uh, canceled, uh, and there won't be a hearing, the, on the revocation hearing on the sixteenth. If the board members have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. For our, for our information, how, to your, I mean, to the best of your knowledge, how does that chartering process work, I mean, for, for Middle College High, as they're going forward, how will it work for them?
Uh, the PEC has its rules and regulations as to when some, an entity wants to apply to them with regards to, um, uh, seeking a state charter through the Public Education Commission, and my understanding is that is soon approaching, um, I believe it's somewhere in October, uh, if they haven't changed their rules and regs, and the PEC will be considering any applications they place at that time. So I would assume that, uh, normal course of business would be some sort of notification from the PEC at some point in December, January, um, I think that that's the timeframe, that they would be making a decision of whether or not they're gonna grant them a charter.
Now, we were on the edge of having an agreement like this, like, a few months ago, right?
There were negotiations with regards to, uh, a means by which this could occur, yes.
Great. Now, Mr. Sanchez, I, I really, I mean, I wanted to say, I, I appreciate your work on this, and I, I believe, is, is Ms. Fox here, Susan Fox, is she here, too?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your help on this as well. I mean, I think we were able to, you know, negotiate this thing and put it together, and we really appreciate your help in, you know, avoiding more of a train wreck. And I, I mean, I, I wanna say, I wanna say for the record that, I mean, I just see this as a, as a win-win. I, you know, this, this corrective action plan, to me, looking through it, I mean, it looks like just kinda making up for lost times in terms of a lot of documentation and things like that, and, I mean, this is, this corrective action plan, uh, I, I think is going to, you know, help Middle College High continue to exist on into the future, I mean, as they, as they follow this stuff and, and their, and their, you know, and their application goes through with the state of New Mexico, you know, I, I, I think it'll, you know, I think they'll be, I think they'll be successful, and I appreciate your help, and I appreciate Ms. Fox's help in negotiating this and, and broker in this whole thing, we can put this thing to bed and, and move forward.
I just wanna say, you know, I don't, I, how trustworthy is all this? I mean, in the first place, I honestly believe that we should've never even got to this point to begin with. Way back when they, Middle College came to us to ask for more students, we had a simple request, you guys go back, we want a full plan from you, we wanna see all your data, we wanna know exactly what you're gonna do to help these kids and, and to better their education. We at, we simply asked for that, and instead, they turned around and were hearing from their attorneys, were hearing from PED. They didn't wanna work with us, and, and it was a simple request, you want more students? We want data. We wanna know how you're gonna educate more students. We want to know what you're gonna do with all this extra funding. It was a simple request, but instead, we got stabbed in the back, they went and got their attorneys, which, you know, I, I don't understand why that even happened. Um, so, uh, so I say, how can we even trust them?
Well, I, I believe that they, I, I can't speak for Susan, but I assume both parties are negotiating in good faith to, to resolve this issue. It was, um, it was something we reduced to, to very clear and specific language, that we wanted to make sure it was clear and understandable. Uh, the contract was, um, negotiated as well, in terms of the sections that we were took out, the ones that we modified, the changes that were added, um, both parties had an opportunity to do that. I think that both parties want, and they have accepted the documents, their governing council certainly has accepted it, uh, and passed it and approved it, and, and I think that we will, we will have now, why that was existing before, now there is an existing set of documents that we can all reference and go back to. Uh, like, your first question about what was the first contract, that was one of the issues that we had, was there was no first contract. There was a contract renewal in twelve, but there was never any underlying contracts. So we've been operating with regards to what their missions were from anecdotal just comments and of people, well, how they've existed in the past. So this has actually given us a contract in which we can, they've delineated what they're gonna, what they're gonna be providing their students, we have delineated what we're gonna do in terms of chartering authority supervision, and we've delineated what the point of, which I think is to your point, uh, Mr. Mitchell, is this is a mechanism by which you can end your relationship with this particular charter school. Um, so that's what we're, we're facilitating that, um, they, they, I never got any feeling that they didn't offer and discuss with us in, in nothing but good faith.
I, I wanted to say also that with the six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, um, dollars, um, is, it, can there be a, can they submit a strategic plan on what's gonna happen to that, to those funds? Because we still have the issue, um, for transportation for their students, food, meals, breakfast, lunch for their students, I, you know, I mean, that, I feel bad for the students that are not even being accommodated, and, you know, even for, I, it just feels wrong that there's still no accommodation for them. So I don't know if they could submit a strategic plan to incorporate those, and, but I think something needs to be done, and those funds need to be, they need to tell us what they're gonna use those funds for. If it's construction, like what was stated, um, you know, I mean, they, we need to be told that, because I don't know what they're gonna, what's the construction for, where are they moving, what are they building, what is it for, um, is a question I also wanted to ask.
Ms. Manulito, in, in the, in the corrective action plan, is actually a short, they're supposed to provide, this board with short and long-term goals for the expenditures of that Monday, and they also had that provision in the corrective action plan I, that I read there, was that they can't use it for capital outlay without your approval. So there's gonna have to be some reporting as to where the money's gonna go and how it's gonna be spent, of whether it can be, even be spent this current year, because, you know, um, even if, if you're gonna build a building or build, buy a building, the, the PFSA, um, the public, the public finances, the facilities, uh, agency has to be notified, and all that other stuff has to go along with it, in terms of whether the building, there's, there's a lot of the stuff that goes into the capital outlay, so obviously, if they have any plans that way, they're gonna have to come forward, uh, to the board with how that's gonna happen.
And my last comment would be, um-
PSFA, I'm sorry, I was, I just threw a bunch of initials out there like I knew.
I also would like to say thank you. I know this, we, we've been dragged through the mud, um, with, over this, um, but I think, you know, thank you for, uh, staying, um, professional. We knew, we knew this, uh, we knew what was going on, but, you know, I mean, we, we weren't at liberty to say much, but I think, until the public hearing, and I think with what was gonna be proposed during the public hearing, this would've come out anyway. So I'm just very thankful that, um, both parties, both of us have agreed on a settlement and, and agreement, and, you know, the corrective action, um, was, is in draft form right now, but I think once it's, um, put together right, I think those are gonna, and I, I just think, um, their attorney, our attorney, superintendent, staff, um, for being patient with us, and, and I just wanted, I, I know, um, our superintendents getting all the heat on a lot of this stuff, but this wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for the board questioning a lot of these, or the board receiving complaints about some of these. This was not all Mr. Hyatt, Superintendent Hyatt's. We heard some of these, we asked about it, we asked for the minutes, we asked for them to investigate it. That's how this all started to generate, and it wasn't just one individual that started this, um, investigation, it was questions and concerns from our constituents about this, and that's where everything started to get investigated. So I don't think it's fair that one person is also being thrown under the bus, because it's, it's not like, that wasn't what really happened. So thank you for everything you guys have done.
Thank you, Ms. Manulito.
Anybody else?
Mr. President, I'd like to, um, I'd like to, uh, uh, make a motion that we-
Wait, uh, hold off on that motion. Uh, thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And one thing I'd like to say is that all the information that was provided, the facts, they come from Middle College. These are not something that was developed by the school district. It wa- it came from Middle College themselves. They're the ones that produced these. And through this whole thing, as a board, our superintendent, and even one of our state-elected officials, we were criticized. We were dragged through the mud. Comments from parents, former students, and even Middle College staff. But not one time did anybody say, maybe the school district has a point, we should meet with them. Nobody ever said that. But we were professional, we never said anything. And I guess that's one thing that everybody needs to hear. And for board members and those in the audience, I wanna say that the settlement agreement wasn't initiated by us, it was initiated by Middle College. Because if you can see the facts, we weren't the ones that fought. So you guys are the ones that initiated, and your council has agreed to it, and now, as we approve the settle, settlement agreement and the contract, this will become your roadmap, Middle College. You have to comply with what you said you're gonna do. You're gonna comply with it. Otherwise, there still may be a revocation hearing. That's what I wanna say. Thank you. And, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to-
Yes.
-make a motion that we ratify and approve the final settlement agreement with Middle College High School and approve, uh, and ex, the, and execution of charter contract for Middle College High School as well.
Okay, motion's been made by-
We reversed it.
Oh, okay. Do the corrective action plan first.
Corrective action plan.
With the, with the amendments.
Okay, uh, need a motion on the corrective action plan, that this is still a rough draft, it's a working document, and we're given our superintendent, uh, the authority to add additional concerns that were brought up and put a timeline on each of the corrective action. Need a motion?
I, can I correct that? I'm not gonna add any additional terms other than the, the due date, no other corrective actions will be on there, and all I need is the authority to add due dates, and a, a couple corrections that were mentioned in the meeting, that's it.
Need a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the corrective action plan for Middle College High School with giving the authority of the superintendent to set time dates.
Okay, motion's been made by Michael Schaaf. Need a roll call? John?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, now I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, ratify and approve the final settlement agreement with Middle College High School, um, and, uh, approve the execution of the charter contract for Middle College High School as well.
Okay, motion's been made, uh, by Chris Mortensen, roll call?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, board members.
Mr. Long, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Goshim. Motion's been made for adjournment. Roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Time, time.
Nine forty.
We're adjourned at nine forty.